Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. The first order of business is appointment of alternates, and we have four regular members. Did I go too fast here for you, Laura? So Melissa, you've been missed a few times there as an alternate, so we'll appoint you as an alternate. And Jackie, so we're gonna leave you out tonight, Chuck. All right, the second item is approval of minutes of March twenty-first. Anybody have any comments on the minutes?
Kevin, I missed the meeting, so I'm gonna abstain from comment on the minutes and the vote.
Okay, who was here that was there?
I was here, I can make the motion.
Melissa was, oh yeah, you were, were you appointed that night?
Yeah.
Oh, man. Here, I was thinking you hadn't been appointed in a while. All right, so you'll make the motion?
You weren't here, that's why I was appointed. I moved to approve the minutes of the meeting of March, what's the date on that? Twenty-first.
All right. Okay, you're not appointed. We don't have enough appointees that were here that night. Were you here, Anne?
I was not. I have to abstain.
I was there.
You were there, but you're
Oh.
But you're not seated tonight.
I wasn't there. Move to table, my own motion.
We don't, we don't have enough people from that night to move the minutes to approve the minute. Well, we'll pass on them. All right, so then we're on to agenda item three, public hearings. The first application's number twenty-two oh nine of Megan O'Connor, applicant owner. Application for a special exception pursuant to section eight point six of the Simsbury zoning regulations to apply for a beer, wine, liquor permit for their property located at one Gristmo Road, assessor's map F eleven, block one oh three, lot zero zero five dash twenty, zone B two. And now that I've read all that, it says application postponed by applicant until four eighteen.
So if we could have a motion to table the application until that day?
Okay. To table until the eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, then I'll read the next second one, and that one is, so, application number twenty-two dash ten of Anne Olivera. Applicant owner, application for a special exception pursuant to section eight point six of the zoning regulations to apply for liquor permit for the property located at two forty-four Farms Village Road. C ten, block four eighteen, lot zero sixteen, zone B three. And Anna, I think you're here.
I am, I'm here.
There you are, okay, I'd find it. All right, just want to tell us what your application's all about.
Yeah, so we, we are in his kitchen, and we have the restaurant and a banquet room next door, and we would like to start serving wine, beers, and other liquors in our restaurant and in the banquet room. We are open for dinner once a week, every Friday from six to nine, so it's not something that is gonna be late at night. But we feel that we, it would be better for us if we could serve alcohol. We are already BYOB, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions here?
Does that mean mimosas with brunch? So a glass of wine would be available, or a beer would be available at lunchtime as well.
Right, and the most is for breakfast.
On the dinner time, you mentioned you're only open on Friday for dinners. So six nights a week, you're not open, is that your business strategy, that's your intention, you're not, you don't intend to be open in the evening?
Well, we do plan, I don't know when, to be honest, this is a long-term thing, but we plan to be open more nights, yes.
Okay. And just to remind me, on BYOB, is that a type of a permit or a license from the state liquor commission?
No. No, it's just people can bring their, their, their wine. Right now, it's just wine, and people bring their wine, and they can drink there. I just cannot touch it, or serve it, or profit from it.
So it's the business owner's decision?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay.
Hey, anybody else have questions?
Were you gonna say anything about the drawings that you shared with us of the space? I was just wondering about the configuration, not trying to be a detective here, but I've been in the room that you walk into when you come in from the parking lot. It's a large room, and I think it's your main room, but, well, I couldn't quite picture the orientation of these other rooms around that one.
I was the one that drew this, so, um, what exactly was, I'm sorry, what was the question exactly?
Do you have a picture that you're referring to, pointing out, maybe we can help you?
If you can help who?
You, with the question, if you
Where is the banquet room in relationship to?
So the, the main room is the, the one that you walk through right now. Yeah, that picture, that, that's the banquet room, so that's
Oh, that's the banquet room, that's
Yeah, that's, no, then, that's on the side.
Well, so you enter through the main room to get to the banquet room?
Well, yeah, we also have a door to the banquet room, which we're not using yet, because we're not using the banquet room. But you can
So it's, it's, sorry, it's unit A and unit B. So the restaurant right now is unit B, but unit A has its own entrance. And it's, it's a separate room, but you can go from one room to the other as well internally. Inside, yes.
Okay, actually, I gotta, I gotta back up for a procedural thing here, and we actually need you to give your full name and address, and then we also need the Richardsons to do the same.
Okay.
Just so we have it for the
Okay, so, Helena Richardson?
Christopher Richardson.
The address?
Of forty-seven Robin Drive in Barkhamstead. It is zero six, zero six three.
I think we only need the street in town, right, and Laura, and then Anna, your address?
One two two Northbrook Drive in West Hartford.
Okay, all right, sorry, Laura. All right, so, in, in your drawings, there isn't a designated bar area?
No.
Not yet.
We haven't, we haven't, you know, built that or bought anything like that yet, we were kind of starting the process with the liquor license, and once that process has started, we were then gonna start building. You're building, buying, and, you know.
Well, do you have thoughts on where you would put it? Is it a secure area behind the service desk, or?
When you say the bar area, you mean where the, the bottles will be kept, or will be stored, or where we're gonna serve?
The open We have a locked, we have a locked up storage area in the rear.
Yeah, but when you're open, when you're open, you're not gonna go to the storage unit for them, right?
No, we'll have a, we'll have a bar area eventually, we'd like to, as of now, we keep them locked up in the, in the kitchen area. And we have a walk-in refrigerator. Places that, you know, the general public does not have access to.
Well, I'm gonna question you on that one, because you just said you didn't serve liquor now.
We don't. We don't.
Go ahead.
We have a
We haven't
Walk-in currently, and we have a storage room which is locked, it's all, all the way in the back of the banquet room. That's where we plan on storing the drinks, once we have started selling drinks.
Bruce, does that answer your questions sufficiently?
As a matter of fact, no, but I, you know, I'm not all hung up on it, I'm trying to understand this, and really, one, one, one piece of paper, one drawing would have done the trick, we just needed the layout. But we're, I'm still not clear, like, on the banquet room, I see a drawing that says banquet room. I don't see a locked storage room anywhere.
So that piece of paper you had right there, it, it says storage right on the side, that is a hallway that you walk after you walk through the banquet room, and then to your left says storage, that's where the locked storage room is. And then to your right, you have a couple of bathrooms, but yeah, that's the storage area. The banquet room is the one that has the tables and yeah, and the offices.
And that's where the bar will, will be built, in the banquet room.
So in a corner or something in that room?
Yeah.
When you were going to the state for the license, did you ask for any outside dining at all?
No, not yet, no.
Well, you, you wanna do it all at once, because otherwise you end up paying fees twice.
Okay.
You wanna designate the area, I mean, I don't even know if you used the sidewalk at all during COVID, if you did that or not.
Yeah, we have, like, I think, three tables outside. Four tables.
And, well, would you do it for? Is your intent to do, to, to do the liquor license, use your liquor license only when you have banquet, which would be indoors, or will you?
No. We will be using for, for the restaurant as well.
All right, so the regular restaurant does have some outdoor dining where you could potentially serve someone on the outdoors?
Right.
Okay, did you indicate that anywhere on your state license or on our application?
Just looking at the current application that I have, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, they are not currently requesting a patio permit for their state liquor license.
Yeah, well, that's not something we're doing right now, no.
Okay, so it's something you know that if you wanna come back to serve outside, you'll have to come back at a
Yes.
It's just not something that we're doing right now.
We got kicked out of the meeting a second ago, we, we didn't catch the end of the last few minutes, I mean it.
I didn't either, so, something happened to the audio.
Okay, so, so have you already submitted to the state?
No, we had to wait for this meeting to hopefully get the signatures, we need to then apply to the state.
All right, so, so Laura, is there a way for them to amend this on the fly here to include a patio dining? And I hate to have them spend, you know, they'll have to spend a liquor, you know, state permit and another zoning permit just to add patio.
Yeah.
Where are you looking to do your outdoor dining?
It would be at the front of the
Okay, so nothing to the side, just on that temporary sidewalk basis? Just to let you know, as far as just understanding on how the outdoor dining provisions were currently, we're still under the COVID executive orders. So, once they become permanent outdoor dining, it's gonna need a site plan amendment anyway. If they would decide to go forward with it being permanent. Everything's just kind of gotten a little bit of more easy to process because of the COVID restrictions. We wanted to include that, it would be a little bit difficult to do it in this application, because they don't unfortunately have a great if you're just doing the sidewalk temporarily for the next year, that would be something that we could do under the temporary outdoor dining provisions.
Okay.
What if they, you know, withdrew this right now and, and came back in with the, with the site plan amendment to, to include it, though?
Rather than withdrawing it, they could, we could put the, we could table it if that's their intention, and to add a site plan amendment to it, including the outdoor dining. That way, we don't have to renotice anything.
No.
Not a public hearing.
Well, but it would be both, because I would still have to have the public hearing and the site plan change.
So we, we sent you, we, we, we correct the, the application, we amend the application and send it back to you?
Right, yeah, you can work with, you know, the, the staff to, you know, get it the way you really want it. And, and, and I guess, you know, that way you could do it under your current fees, instead of doubling your fees, or something that you think you're gonna wanna do anyhow. If you don't wanna do it, then we can go this way, but just trying to save you some money in the long run.
That sounds good.
Now, it'd be, you know, be a month, because I don't think, do we meet again in this month? Yeah, we do, okay, so it'd be two weeks. Yeah, so if you can, you know, figure it out in two weeks, and, and just do a little drawing of the site plan. Actually, the owner has a site plan that you could get, or you could get it through the staff. And then just outline where your, where your permit, where you would want a patio permit.
Just bear in mind that provisions are different for temporary outdoor dining versus permanent outdoor dining, so it's entirely up to you, as if you want those three tables, I'm trying to save people fees as well, but I don't know if they'll allow. We haven't released that permanent outdoor dining patios for front just yet.
Okay.
Why not?
We have outdoor dining in places?
But not on sidewalks, I don't think.
Correct.
Sidewalks is COVID.
Correct.
Otherwise, they're patios that are designated.
Thank you.
So, just one question, before we were there, when it was Manny's and Mario's, they didn't have those tables there? Because I thought there was, there was always outdoor dining there, I, I didn't know we would have to apply for a permit to, to use those, those tables outside.
Only for liquor?
Right, so for the liquor only, we right, it's just for the liquor?
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay, okay, sorry, okay.
All right, so, are, do you wanna table this at this point, or do you want us to proceed with this and then come back?
As it was presented. Proceed as it was presented, or?
I think we, I think it would be better if we would amend it and then do it at once, so we don't have to go back and, and pay another fee and everything.
But are we sure they're, are we sure they're gonna be able to get the outdoor dining based on, that's the problem? They're not going to
So can we get
Be able to get the outdoor dining without the COVID nineteen pass?
Why don't you?
Do we not have, I, I can't remember how wide the sidewalk is there, is there not any provision at all for?
It's fairly wide.
It, it's wider than the standard
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what the regulations would be for it to be considered patio. If that falls under a different category, but it's, it's definitely wider than the standard sidewalk.
I, I thought, well, let's, if, if you're okay, then let's table this, and you can work with staff to, to take a look at it, just they know the regs better than we do. And they could give you some, you know, you're only delaying it two weeks, I don't think that will be.
All right, I'm Jeff Holberman, I'm a co-owner with Anna. And I just have a question for you, and I've been following the conversation.
Could you give us your address, please? We got your name, what's your address?
One two two Northbrook Tribe.
Thank you.
West Hartford. So my question is, so we can get the outdoor seating right now with the license under COVID? And that probably will last a year. Right, without having tabled this and amended. And so you're not sure that under the regulations that we would qualify for outdoor dining, outdoor liquor license, under your regulations, however? Without
Would have to be reviewed by the fire marshal, right now, they have very lax, basically, or very lax provisions in order for the executive orders.
Was anybody rejected who applied for it, Laura? Any of the restaurateurs in town?
As far as patio permits?
Yeah, for temporary.
For temporary?
Right, no, if you ask for it, basically. The history is, you get it.
Right.
Guaranteed until you apply.
Right, so it sounds like, I mean, we could easily just get the, the temporary one now without having to do anything else.
Well, you still have to do the permit.
You gotta get the liquor permit that includes outdoor, yeah.
Okay, so we have to amend the application for the liquor permit?
First, if you want liquor outside, you would have to amend it, because you didn't ask anything for outside use.
Okay, so that's for the state, and then for the town, it's the, um, actual sidewalk itself. Regulations, and, and it is kind of tricky, because that's really not a sidewalk. I mean, a sidewalk, you, you know, traditionally be walking through something or around, it's really set up as a patio and not a sidewalk. But I guess that would be for a different discussion with the town.
If you wanna see something that might give you a feel for it, is the, the Mexican or Spanish restaurant that's in the old Dunkin' Donuts, right in the center of the city. They have seating outside on, you know, what's that, a sidewalk?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's concrete, and it's right outside, and it's not very large, yeah.
Okay, so.
Do you know?
That's probably under COVID.
I believe that is under COVID, I would have to double-check from when they opened, but I believe that was under COVID restrictions as well.
So it's
Go ahead, Donna.
Can, can they go ahead and get the liquor permit? Or for the COVID outdoor dining with an amendment tonight? Or do they have to redo their application?
They can, they will be eligible for outdoor dining tonight with the, the outdoor service on those three tables like they did previously, tonight with a special exception. When it comes to
Right.
With liquor, when it comes to next year, in March, I believe thirty-first, the executive order expires. And going forward, then, any kind of permanent outdoor dining is gonna require a patio, outdoor dining, state liquor permit. Right now, if you serve liquor inside, you're still allowed to serve liquor outside under the COVID provisions.
Got you.
Okay, so that would be good tonight until March of next year.
Correct.
I would prefer, I know, Lena, but we're discussing in front of everybody, I would prefer that we just go ahead tonight.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll turn it over to Anna again, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions, Melissa? Anne, you're okay?
No, I'm good.
Good, all right, Bruce, you okay?
Yep, good to go, Kevin.
All right, do we have a motion here to close the public hearing then? And there isn't any other comments, right, Laura?
In the public?
Definitely public.
No public comment.
Kevin, I just, I just wanna confirm, how close is the closest residential? I know that there are a couple, like, little farmhouses over by there, and, and have those folks received notice?
The sign has been posted for over fifteen days, indicating that there's a public hearing going forward, and it was made a notice in the newspaper.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion then for closing the public hearing?
I'm of closure, the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Application twenty-two ten.
Second from somebody?
I'll second that.
All right, Melissa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, okay, so that closes the public hearing, then we'll have a little vote later, just so you guys know what's going on. Okay, um, actually, that little one is next, because we don't have any old business, and so, under new business application twenty-two ten of Anne Olivera is up for a vote, so any further discussion on this one?
How do I?
Nope, then we do, we have a motion, we have a, a staff memo with a amended motion in there. If anybody wants to move that.
I'm in favor, but I, I don't have a written copy of that, so I feel like, I'm not prepared to make the motion, but I'm prepared to support it.
And I'm looking for it.
Well, I can make the motion.
Okay.
All right, I will motion to approve application number twenty-two dash ten of Anna Olivera, Anna's Kitchen, applicant owner. Application for a special exception pursuant to section eight point six of the zoning regulations to apply for a restaurant liquor permit for the property located at two forty-four Farms Village Road, assessor's map C ten, block four eighteen, lot zero one six, zone B three. The commission makes following findings and granting the special exception for the liquor license modification one through six on attachment A dated Monday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. In granting the special exception, the commission issues the following conditions of approval. One, special exception is not effective until a copy of the notice of brand is filed with the Simsbury Town Clerk. And two, further expansion of the premise, which triggers a modification to the liquor permit, are to be approved by the zoning commission.
All right, we do need to go over, we'll get a second, and then we'll go over the, the exceptions, so who's gonna second?
I'll be the second. And can be the second.
Or Anne, Anne, we'll go with Anne.
Okay.
So if we can go one by one through the through the
Kevin, I think I hear on mute, maybe, no? Did you end up on mute, we're not hearing you? Were you speaking?
No, I'm, I think I'm good.
Oh, 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 oh. I thought you were trying to get going on the six items, then.
Well, I was trying to get going, I just gotta find them.
Oh.
Donna, are they in the, in the motion you read, are there six items there?
There are, I can, I can start you out here.
Yeah, if you can do that.
Okay, number one is orderly development, the application is not proposing any site work associated with this application.
Right, I think that one's met, okay, item two?
Item two is property values, property value for the site will be increased with the planned investment.
Okay. Agree.
Three is public safety, minimal impact.
Okay, number four?
Four is traffic consideration, minimal impact.
No disagreement.
Okay, five is landscaping and buffers, not applicable to this application. And six is relationship to utility systems, drainage systems, and impact on community facilities. Not applicable to this application.
All right, so we've covered all six, and they're all, we feel they all meet. Okay, any other discussion?
No.
No, you ready for a vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, six. No opposed, all right, so the, the application is approved, then?
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks, good luck. Okay, our next application is the twenty-two eleven of the Cobb School. And Terry, I think you're doing that one?
Yes, I am. This is Terry Han, principal of LADA PC, one oh four West Street, Simsbury, Connecticut. With me over on the side here, microphone from Cobb School. I have a short PowerPoint, just to sort of go through what it is that we're trying to do, if that's okay.
That would be good.
Just thought it would be easier. Clicking up, oops, wrong way. Okay, so this is Cobb School, proposed pavilion. Back in two thousand and twenty, when COVID first came, COVID Um, back in twenty twenty when COVID first came, uh, COVID, the, uh, Cobb School started thinking about outdoor classrooms. Um, and there was some temporary components discussed. And finally, they have decided that, yes, they need something on a more permanent basis, not a COVID related, but still outdoor programming, um, is, uh, sort of a byproduct of COVID, uh, so they're looking to put a pavilion out on their, their property. Um, for those of you who, uh, not sure, it's my, the Cobb Montes, Cobb School Montessori is located on the corner of Sand Hill Road and Bushy Hill. Um, they've, uh, proposing a small pavilion, um, basically wood uh, and wood tone posts, um, uh, shingles that are slightly, uh, warm gray with some, uh, tan tones, as you can see here. The pavilion itself is seventeen feet by twenty-nine feet plus or minus, um, around the roof line, that's the outer limit. Inside is nine foot, uh, ten inches tall, the roof itself is twelve feet, six inches. Um, with the proposal, just, um, is their outdoor space along Bushy Hill. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar, there's a white picket fence that goes along that whole area. And you can see on the photo on the right-hand side, there's a berm and planting between the fence and their used area of the field that is behind their building. Um, we're proposing, just so you can see on this, uh, plan, you can see Bushy Hill Road on the left-hand side of the drawing. You can see the existing fence and berm, um, and you can see the setback line, there's a fifty and a forty-foot setback off of that corner. And the proposed pavilion is set in the corner just off the setback lines. Just an enlargement, so you can see what's going on. Uh, and then we have a couple of little sketches, um, if you're, uh, it's on the, there's a sketch on the right-hand side of your screen, if you've got one of those things where everybody is on the right-hand side, you may or may not be able to see it, uh, so that's, you can see the pavilion sort of set into the existing photos. And then we have two more from two different views along, uh, Bushy Hill Road. The idea here is that we would like to have the pavilion, but it's open and it just sort of, um, sort of fades away into the, the scenery here. Uh, so that it's not, we're not trying to make a statement, we're just allowing for outdoor use and a covered pavilion uh, that suits their needs, but isn't too big, it, you know, uh, just fits right into their existing property. That concludes my comments. We did go to design review, um, earlier th- uh, this evening and received a positive recommendation from them.
Okay, we have staff comments here. Good.
There was a staff comment sheet in the Dropbox, yeah.
This is just a simply a site plan amendment, it is located in the residential zoning district in R forty, they received their special exception for the operation of the school back in nineteen ninety-five, March twentieth. And just with the recommendations that they require administrative zoning, uh, permit and that the commission would authorize staff to approve minor changes to landscaping and grading.
Okay. Um, somebody want to make a motion?
Can we ask a question first?
Oh, you can ask questions afterwards, too.
Okay.
Yeah, but you can ask questions first.
Sure, so, um, I noticed that the pavilion is right up against the setback and that this is a residential zone and there is a house right there. And there's also a swimming pool at that house. Um, I'm just curious why this is being placed as far back on the property as possible and um, are, have the owners received adequate notice? Do they understand this is going on? What kind of noise or other, um, residential disturbances have been considered and how those folks over there in that house feel?
Um, the Cobb School actually owns that house.
Okay. That's right.
It's the Walker, but okay, if it's the Cobb School.
No, the, the Cobb School purchased that house and the house next to it, um, which will be the subject of an application in two weeks.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. Sneak preview. Any other questions?
Oh, Terry, I think you did a good job here with the explanation and keeping it concise. I got it.
Well, I guess, I guess I do have another question then, you know.
Oh, gee.
Yeah, you know, is the plan for there to be other things on the other side of that pavilion? Is there, is there a grand plan that we haven't seen yet that this is really part of?
Um, no, not to the, the extent that you're talking about, uh, the grand plan is simply to allow potential school use of those properties because right now they are residential property, you know, they're, there's own residential. So the idea of the, the next application is for the, those buildings to be, uh, used by students, you know, as part of the program. But right now, we don't have that application in place at this time.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hmm.
Someone have the motion ready?
I, I have it ready this time. I'm ready this time, Kevin. How about if I do it?
Yeah, thank you.
This is a motion to approve application twenty-two eleven of Cobb School, applicant owner and Brandon Clark, agent, application for site plan amendment pursuant to section three, three point five of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the construction of a thirty by eighteen plus or minus pavilion on the property located at one twelve Sand Hill Road. Per plans provided entitled, proposed outdoor pavilion location plan. Assessor's map E fourteen, block one thirty-one, lot sixteen. Zone R forty. The approval of the site plan modification is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Number two, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans, such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. End of motion.
Could we have a second?
I'll second.
No.
I like, I'd like to move the table, I'd like to move to table this motion.
Say what? We just had a motion already made.
Yeah, but I'm moving to table the motion, um, yeah. Until we have the full application in front of us about the intended uses of the other two properties.
Well, you can, I need a, you need a second on that motion.
Oh, we got, we got, yeah. Okay, we need a second to Melissa's motion.
That's what I need to table it.
Well, we're having discussion on the first motion, so we would have to go forward with the first motion that was on the table and already seconded.
Not if I've moved to table that motion. I didn't move to table the application, I moved to table the motion.
Okay.
All right, but at this point, she doesn't have a second. So based on that, the motion to table.
Fails.
Fails.
Fails. And so we can go ahead with the vote on the motion. Are we ready for that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
One, two, three, and those opposed? Want to post, okay. Five to one, so the motion carries. Okay, thank you, Terry, again. Good, we appreciate the preparation you do, it always makes it much easier and clearer. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay, next application is, uh, application twenty-two twelve of SL Simsbury LLC, applicant owner. And we have a group of people. All right.
Hi.
All right, so who, yeah, whoever's going to speak, if you just give your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Rod Swilicky, I'm a site civil engineer, uh, representing SL Simsbury LLC. With me tonight, I have, uh, our architect, Brian, Brian Cooney, and the owner developer, the Silverman Group, you could see in, uh, the large table there waving to, to the commission, um, we're here, and we're here. We're here tonight for a minor site plan amendment application, um, let me share my screen, that way I could talk to it. Bear with me one second. Is that, can you guys see the site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
So the application tonight is to modify the existing footprint of the previously approved office retail building number one. Uh, the footprint is increasing from approved eight thousand square feet to eighty-eight hundred square feet, and they're proposing a second story on the building. Uh, the site as it is, it's, it's zoning compliant. It meets a site master plan approval. The, the parking is zoning compliant. And, uh, the mixed-use development itself was created for walkable, shareable parking, which, uh, we continue to have. We went to design review board right before this meeting, uh, they made some comments for the elevations and consideration that, uh, I think Brian could kind of go through in his presentation. Um, and if you guys have any site questions for me, I can answer them, if not, I'd, I'd like to kick it to Brian to, to go over the elevations with the commission.
Okay. Brian?
Sure, any questions? All right, uh, let me, here we go, let me share my screen.
Man, as you do this, could you, uh, call our attention to whatever the relevant points were made with DRB? So we can hear that as we go through this rather.
Right, so the main relevant points of, uh, of the design board were, uh, signage locations uh, of the building and the, uh, oh, let's start at the floor plan. They, they didn't have any, uh, comments in the floor plan, so this is the main floor plan of the building, which has, uh, cores in it, uh, the left and right, and then, uh, it's a multi-tenanted designed building, so you'd be, be able to have multiple tenants or one single tenant, but theoretically multiple tenants, uh, throughout the entire building. You can see the main entries, uh, the six main entries here. And the step, the stepped kind of outline of the building indicates, uh, the, it, we were trying to match the same aesthetic of the entire building complex. It's all, uh, a village feel, so it's, it's smaller buildings ganged up to look like a smaller scale kind of building, uh, instead of one large commercial building. So the comments they had were the actual signage locations for the tenants, so if, uh, this was the side of the the building that they're looking at, they're just wondering where the signs would be for street view from from, uh, from, you know, uh, a mounting height and where, where exactly they'd be located. That's what they had a big, um, question about, just the commercial kind of like allure of the building from the street. So I think we're going to address that, um, we have ideas as to where the signs could go. Uh, and I think we can, we can work with our current aesthetic and, and, and have, you know, visible sign locations for the tenants to, to use. Just going through, just here's the end elevation, uh. So this would be the corner, uh, this is the main kind of the main tenant that would be here, the anchor tenant position spot would be potentially here in this corner.
So that is the south corner?
It's, um, this, this is facing Hot Meadow right here, so it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a south.
Southwest.
Corner, southwest corner, forgetting which.
So to the right of that would be the entrance to the.
Right, yep, the, the main, the main drive-in is right here, and then the other commercial, right across the street. Go back to the plan, see if, did that, the main that, uh, anchor tenant location, as explained, is right here, so as you drive in, it's the most visible.
Right, so the, the stairway to the second floor there.
Let me go back. Yep.
Right, so, um, is, is the second floor um, layout exactly the same as the first floor?
It's essentially exactly the same, yes, um. It would have, um, depending on the, uh, the type of tenant we would get for it, it could potentially have a, um, a central lobby that could access, you know, multiple office suites or, or retail suites.
Is there an elevator or no elevator?
Uh, over, over here, there's, uh, right, right across from the parking elevator right here.
Okay, I can't, it's too small to tell.
Yeah, it's small, small square right here, yeah, it's right, it's right there.
Okay, so you could come up through that elevator and where would be your center core be?
It would be in that location. So it'd be a continuous, you'd have two, two means out, so this would be a fire-rated central corridor for the.
Yeah, all right, so you don't have the second floor layout then?
Um, did I speed bite, right, right here?
Okay, all right, yeah, that makes a little.
Yeah, it's pretty quick.
A wall when you go on the other one, yeah, okay.
Yeah. See, there's two means out, uh, this would be a fire-rated corridor and it has an elevator to access, so be ADA accessible and, you know, one hour fire-rated.
May I? I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a little to understand because I wasn't on zoning when the whole master plan, this was originally approved, but um, you stated that the only change here is that you're expanding from an eight thousand square foot building to an eighty-eight hundred square foot building and you're adding a second floor. How do you add a second floor and only end up with eight hundred square feet more?
No, I, I apologize, Madam Commissioner. It's the, the building square, square footage increase is on the footprint itself. And they're adding a second floor with another eighty, eighty-eight hundred square feet, so it's going to be a total of seventeen-six.
So you're doubling, more than doubling the size of the building?
Square footage-wise, yes, but as far as the show goes.
From a single story to a two-story right on Hot Meadow, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The building height, it, it actually reduces from what was originally approved for the mean, mean roof, or it's, it, I should say, it's zoning compliant with thirty, thirty foot to the mean, and that's, that's how it was compliant and approved on the original master plan. So the building height doesn't change.
I guess those would have been really tall ceilings in the original building?
That's correct.
Well, that, there, they kind of have a vacant second floor, it was kind of.
Well. What was the, I mean, we're, we're not going forward with the building that was in the, uh, the, uh, master plan, but what was the rentable square footage in that initial building versus the rentable square feet in this one?
So that was, that was eight thousand square feet rentable and this one seventeen thousand six hundred.
And you feel like there's a market for that kind of commercial and retail space in Simsbury right now?
So, so, so what this is, what the applicant's doing here is they're, they're creating themselves a shelf with flexibility. Uh, we, we were in front of the commission for a zone change, I think about a month ago, where we were proposing to change this whole building frontage to residential. Uh, some of the comments that came back from that meeting was, well, we, we want to maintain the commercial aspect of the building and maybe potentially some residential on the top floor. But ultimately, we got denied for the zone change, now we're back in front of the commission with a, uh, almost, let's, um, amended application that heard your comments that gives the developer flexibility in the future if they did want to convert the top floor to residential. But as of now, this application is for two commercial, two commercial floors.
But for anyone who may not be attuned to it, the zone is already set for commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. It doesn't need a zone change for that.
That, that is correct, that, that's allowed by right.
Right. The zone change was all about changing the whole parcel to residential, commercial.
Th- that is correct, Mr. Commissioner.
Changing no to a hundred percent residential.
Oh, excuse me, right.
Okay, does any, any commissioner have questions?
I'd like to see some of the, there are other elevations, if I remember right, that give you a better sense of um, you know, being in closer proximity to those buildings and seeing the, the view of the ridge line.
I think the answer is that there isn't a view of the ridge line once that building goes up, correct?
Well, in certain places, but.
No, th- that building's placed directly to, to the west of an existing apartment building, it's it's right in the same footprint that the original approval was, we still have the corridor boulevard view that, that Brian showed. We still have the corridor boulevard view that, that Brian's showing here of, of that ridge line. This building shouldn't impede that view. It's, it's not taller than what was approved originally that when we, when we went through the whole view shed analysis for the commission.
I believe it's the same height as the existing building on the right as well, over on, on the other side of the, the entry.
Which has a much smaller footprint, correct?
That footprint's about thirty six, thirty six hundred square feet.
Now, as we look at that view, that's the eastern view, right? Yeah. The top of that anchor tenant position, the peak of that hip roof is the same as the peak or the ridge line of the building that you proposed a month ago? Is that what you were saying?
Uh, the building, I think the building we proposed a month ago uh, was four and a half feet higher. We shrunk it down uh, to thirty feet just to, you know, respect that ridge line views.
And what was the, the, the height of the peak on the building that was approved in in the uh, in, in initial uh, plan?
So this is the midpoint. Um, I believe it was thirty six feet, I'm sorry, thirty five feet and we reduced it, I think. I, I can't remember specifically.
And it compares to the one across the road from it for, is that also thirty four feet? Thirty six?
Yeah, I believe it is. Let me go to that one. Yes, this, this other commercial building. Yep. For the peak, I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly sure the exact height, but I think it was about thirty five feet. Then the rest of the, the ridge is lower than that, the main ridge of the, the entire roof.
So the, the ridge line at the north end of this building, the high point is the same as the high point in that southwest corner?
Yep, yes. If you look at the plan view, yeah, they're both exactly the same. There, there's a, a tower element there and a tower element here, and they have the same roof, uh, roof.
But the one that is in that northeast corner is closer to the, is, is more distant from the roadway and it appears.
This is, this is, yes.
Alright, and, and design review went over materials?
No, Mr. Chair, actually, they are scheduled to go forward and back to the design review board with their concerns in two weeks.
Oh. Okay, so they didn't get a positive recommendation from the design review board?
They were unable to secure a positive recommendation. They did table it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'm all about tabling things.
So I would suggest we do the same when we get there, but, but you know, we can give the applicant our feedback today.
Um, if, uh, I could jump in real quick, Holden Spottle from the Sullivan Group, I have Ugo Orsini with me. Um, we did not receive the favorable recommendation from DRB. We wanted to go in front of you, kind of get your comments, see if you had, you know, anything that we could go back DRB with or really to see your overall feeling about everything. Um, like Rod said, we've tried to, we're amenable to changing things um, based on the comments we received. We tried to make the, the look of the building as harmonious to the rest of the committee as possible. Um, but again, we, we wanted to get your feeling, hopefully move forward with this part of the application while still going back to DRB to satisfy that.
In two weeks, on the eighteenth, we're, we're going back and, and, and the comments we're going to address were signage on the building itself, making some bigger spaces for signage, maybe reducing some of the windows, uh, cosmetic things, making sure that there wasn't too many trees around the building so that it looked more commercial, at least on a ground level. And I thought.
Design review asked you to put less trees?
Yes. Yes. Um, and, and so, um, I thought, I don't want to make it, make them sound insignificant, but I thought the comments were, we will be able to address uh, to their satisfaction in the next two weeks and get in front of them again uh, with those, with those comments. With the revisions to the, to the look. And Rod, if you want to bring up some of that signage was in the, uh, the form-based code. Uh, Rob brought up, uh, just to show the design review board some of the, uh, the different types of old fashioned, can I say that? Old fashioned signage and what they call it, street, neighborhood friendly streets.
That would be downtown.
Downtown. Downtown, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Be traditional neighborhood development was what it was.
Yeah, if I, I'll, I'll, I'll pull that up for the commission to, to review. So as, as a part of our, uh, our master plan approval, we're, we're required, let me know if you guys could see that.
Yep.
So we're, we're required to have signage, have, have the character as these examples. So this, this is basically our uh, our palette of, of materials and looks and designs that, that were required to meet for signage. So the, these signs would go great on, on the building architecture and the facade. It's just a matter of planning where, where they go and, and positioning a little bit that DRB had, had an issue with.
I think it was a, a great comment and Brian, I hope that in your office you can kind of get, incorporate some signage in there with some real names on it to um, you know, to make it look retail friendly and give it the, a look and maybe we'll have a little better luck on this side of the road than we have having right now on the other side of the road. But we're going to make an honest effort to uh, put some real signs on this building.
Oh. Okay. How about some other uh, issues? I, you know, and I, I don't know how complicated it is, but I would love to see that profile of the roof line, the building being proposed, looking towards the mountain so that we could see what if any roof line of that large apartment building that is immediately behind it going towards the river and then the ridge line above that. Um, you know, if you're, if you're trying to tell us that your, your ridge line view shed is no different than the building that was previously envisioned, I'd find that kind of intriguing, but I'm, I'm not sure. I, I can't see a clear sort of depiction of what it looks like, you know, with the three lines. The one line being the, the ridge line, the next one being that building that's immediately behind the one being proposed and then the ridge line of the one that's being proposed. I mean, they, they don't need color and vegetation and all, but and which building is that? That's the building being proposed?
No, this was, this was a previously proposed.
That's eight thousand square, okay, I got it.
Yeah, so I was just taking heights to answer your yeah, your question and it was to the peak with the cupola about thirty, thirty five, thirty six feet based on this elevation. Um, so it's, it's, it's right there in the same, the same system and I could, I could show you.
Well, that was, there was a certain amount of resistance to that one, so I don't know that that one needs a lot of attention. It's more about what was originally approved that you went forward and we, there was an agreement that something like this would be built. How tall was that one and what was it like in relation to this?
The peak off that elevation was, was about thirty five feet and I think, I think Brian said that's, that's where our peak is in that thirty five foot elevation.
In the, in the highest point, yeah.
In the, in the highest point.
With the cupola or peak on the whole building?
Peak, peak on the whole building, the root, the ridge line. So what, what I'm showing here is a previously approved site plan.
Yeah.
Where, where this building was more of a rectangle, was about a hundred by eighty. And what we're, what we're doing, what we're doing now is we're going about a hundred and twenty by eighty, but we're extending that into the apartment building four. So we're not, we're not extending the, the addition of the building to, towards the throat of the driveway in the view shed. So a, any extension is in front of apartment building four. Which is, which is a higher building than, than what we're proposing. So this, this would not elevate past apartment building four.
That's a three-story building, apartment building four. So we're, we're a two-story building, so.
So I just want to confirm. So if I'm driving down Hot Meadow and I'm going toward Avon, this is going to be on my left and there's now going to be a new big building. But what I'm hearing is that this new big building was approved before I joined the zoning commission, so it has a right to be there at that height because of the prior zoning approvals, correct?
That, that is correct, Madam Commissioner.
So to the extent that there is some sort of view of the tower left remaining that will be completely irretrated and that has already been approved by this zoning commission except at the promenade of the entryway, correct?
The, this, this building will not obstruct and any more view than what you have today, which was previously approved that way?
I, I, I'm going to push back on that. I, I get that this was previously approved. But let's, let's call spade a spade here. This is much closer to the road. And because it's much closer to the road, there will be an additional um, obscuring of the view and the tower just because of that, but that's already approved. So it's not about whether or how high this goes. It's about this particular building.
Yeah, this, this building's actually pushed ten feet back farther, five to ten feet back farther than this building was. So you can, you can see there's a hundred foot setback buffer for the landscape and, and, and we're pushed back a little farther from that. So, so we are proposing a change, but the elevations that we're proposing are, are what has previously been approved. We're not, we're not going uh, more or less. We actually, we, we heard the comments from the zone change application and, and lowered our peak roof elevation to accommodate those comments.
But I'm more interested in the comparison to the building to the rear and then to the ridge line and acknowledging as Melissa calls your attention to, that footprint at eight thousand square feet was approved and there were some elevations, I suspect. I mean, I wasn't there, but um, were there elevations that went with that?
Yes, I, I had them.
That's the one we just saw.
This, this was the, the previously approved building.
Approved in uh,
as a part of our master site plan development and our site plan. This, this is the eight, eight thousand square foot building we're, we're proposing to replace.
So that had a tower just on one end, the end by the access drives.
Clo- closer to that, to that obstruction of the view that, that we're discussing. Cause this, this would be our roadway here. So this, this would, the peak would be.
Yeah, but you're, you're trying to, I mean, I thought I understood that you were explaining that if you had in the, in the, the slide we were just looking at, if you could look over the top of that building, would you have seen the three-story apartment building behind it or four-story, whatever it is, I've forgotten now?
I think, I think the elevations we created here.
If you go back one, you might be able to see it. Right there. So if you zoom in, you could see that's the apartment building.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So there, that's apartment building peak behind. So that's a, that's a three-story building and I, I think the median height there was fifty feet with a fifty, with a sixty-foot roof height. So this is about half, half the height.
And then the building you're proposing, if we went to the uh, the north-south midpoint and went to the top of the ridge line, what's that about? Not to the inch, but is that fifty feet there? The building you're proposing, right? Right there.
From here to here?
Right in, in the middle of that ridge line, there's a drop down. The north-south ridge line.
Wait for me one second, Commissioner.
Uh, it's the main, the main, the main ridge line?
Yeah, yeah, just call it the main ridge line, the whole thing. What's that?
Thirty feet, let's give or take thirty to thirty-two feet.
Yep.
Okay, so from the vantage point in this slide, if you had the other building placed behind it and took the same image, well, I don't know that you could do that, but I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, are we seeing a behind that, um, a, over the top of that ridge line, would we be looking at the other building or are we looking at the mountain?
I, I would have to, I'd have to take a section to get you a definitive answer. Um, but I, I think that building behind it, even our original application was, was the, the, the furthest peak of that ridge, was that rear building. Um, so, so I would assume since we're not changing heights that we're not going to be.
But if you're making this one lower than the the ridge.
I think you'd be seeing the other building. If you drew a straight line across right now, you'd be seeing the other building.
Yes.
So it's not very scientific, but it sounds like um, this is has less impact on the visual of the ridge line than the building before. But.
To the extent that it's so much closer to the road.
It's, it's right where it was approved.
Oh, I get that.
At eight thousand square feet.
It's a little bigger and, and then ten feet further back.
Well, I've, I've, I'm sort of had, I, I got that topic. Now tell me something else. The trim on, the accoutrements on these windows, what are we looking at? Is that some sort of uh, ironwork?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a product of the three D, uh, three D rendering program to make it look sketchy, but it's, they're, there's regular divided lights, so the windows will match is, all the other windows, yeah.
Oh, huh, good.
Yeah. It looks, it looks like, but it's not.
Yeah, I thought that, you know, I was wondering about the, the, you know, the messaging there.
Yeah, it seemed extra sketchy, this one.
Okay. Well, that's, those are my questions. And when we see the report, you know, you, the work that you know, you, you add to it and enhance it with uh, to respond to DRB specific issues, we'll probably have some more comments, but.
Well, we would be okay with the increase in the footprint. So we can give them some feedback.
I mean, personally, I don't consider that a significant issue. I mean, it is ten percent, but it's a building of eight thousand square feet. And the addition, if I understood the explanation, is on the eastern the bump out in the census on the eastern side of the building. And you don't see that from the road. You don't see that from really north and south. And on the other side, I don't, I don't expect it would be anyone's eye would be, you know, who can, looks in that direction is going to think anything other than that's a fairly large building, no matter how you it wouldn't be, you wouldn't think it was a small building if it was eight thousand.
So what's the footprint for the apartment behind there? Is it, what do you call it, building four or what do you call the apartment building behind it?
It's apartment building four. It's about sixteen thousand.
Sixteen, so it's half the size of the building behind it.
That's the footprint or the?
That's, that's the footprint.
Yeah, so the square footage is dramatically, I mean, it, it's a three stories, so you know, it's going on fifty thousand square feet of rent, you know, apartment units, you know, rounding off hallways and stairwells and stuff.
Yeah, and you're.
It's a dramatically larger building.
And you can kind of see that because it's the office building is only about half the the length of building behind it. Then you got the parking lot.
How about parking? Is the parking still adequate or have you made some changes that we haven't talked about in parking?
Yeah, so, so our overall parking for the development still meets how, what's outlined in the form-based code. With, with this modification, we, we really, we really dropped from point two-three to point two-three. It's if, if you round one way up or down, we're still at point two-three for the apartments. And we, we have enough for uh, the office and the retail, both of them through, throughout the development.
Okay, and, and just a point of clarification, then I think I'm, I'm done, but. Okay, and, and just a point of clarification, then I think I'm, I'm done, but. You're referencing the form-based code, in particular relative to the illustration of the types of signage that you think would fit well here. And you're recalling the form-based code, I just want to be clear, we have two form-based codes in Simsbury, one applies to the center of town. And the other applies to this acreage that the Silverman's acquired, which one are you referring to?
So I, I'm refer, I'm referring to this, to this package that was approved, this master site development plan for this development itself.
And that, that's based on the form-based code that was developed for this property, okay?
Correct.
And I'm not sure, it, a, a very different group of people concocted the two of them. And so I don't know that, we know there's differences, let me just put it like that, I don't want to discover later that you were using one book and. We were expecting the other.
Nope, so, so the original Hartford form-based code required. Um, the applicant to create their own master plan form-based code that was then. Submitted to the commission and, and reviewed and approved prior to our site development. So, so this, this is our, basically our zoning regulation package for this site development, so. That's, that's what we're following, that's what we need to follow, and we're adhering to it.
Okay, I'm not accusing you of not following, I just want to make sure the terminology, we're not confused here.
Totally understand, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have feedback for them bef- before they come back next time? I don't know, you got anything?
Um, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to see the retail. Back instead of the residential, um. Even if we get the retail on the bottom. Um, and it does actually step back a little bit from the road because of the indentations, um. I don't think the extra spare footage is significant to me, so that would be, those would be my comments.
What about this, this concept of less landscaping because it's commercial?
Yeah.
I think the comment was to show, instead of, this is, you know, general residential landscaping in front, they wanted a more plaza look. Shown in the, in the rendering set I had shown before, uh, just showing. People in more open spaces, I think that's what the main comment was.
And not less, but different.
Different, different.
Right.
All right, and what do you have there for, um, public amenities, as you know? Like, um, benches, bike racks, whatever.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, so we're in staying consistent with what we just, or, uh, excuse me, what was originally approved, we have, we have benches, we have trash bins. We have bike racks, so all the amenities that were originally approved, there's, are still there. Really, it's, it's what you see in this square between sidewalks and parking lot is, is being modified. All other side amenities are, are being maintained.
Okay, so you can still walk around the building?
Yep, it, it connects to the main sidewalks, which then connect to the trail, so this is, as planned, a, a walkable community for. For everyone to use.
Okay, any other, Anne, you have anything to?
Um, no, I guess, I just wonder, um, since, um, these folks came before us, um, about a month ago. With rental property because they couldn't fill office, um, space, that there was no, um. Need for it or no desire, wasn't as, I don't know. They could get more income or with rental property than they could with this, I'm just wondering how they are now planning on, on occupying these buildings. Do they have these offices, do you have, um, people ready to come in, or what is your plan to fill these spaces?
No, no, we, we don't.
All right, I could answer that, so it's a spec development right now, um. Obviously, we're gonna market it as much as we possibly can, because quite frankly, we don't want another vacant building. Um, and yes, our original intent was to build this, or not original, but newly original intent was to build this as rental properties. Um, we heard your comments, and, yeah, now we're, we're gonna build commercial, we're gonna market as commercial.
JR?
I, I think we have JLL, Broker Shop.
Our brokers will, will work on re-presenting this in conjunction with the very six hundred square feet on the other side of the street. And, um, we've gone bounce back for a couple of times, just get some fresh energy in it, and, um, with this, we'll do the same again. There's Naggar, Nagasak, Nagars, some kind of thing, I mean, brokerage. No, actually, so the brokerage firm will, uh, put this back on the market again, this space and the other space, the thirty-six hundred of, and. And, uh, market it. Uh, in, in the, in whatever region they, they go in, I mean, there's an honest attempt to, to move this thing forward as retail space.
Well, it, it doesn't have to be retail, we're asking, you know, it can be offices.
Say that again?
We're, we're asking commercial space, which would include offices, so it doesn't have to be retail, we wouldn't expect retail in the second floor.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes. There's no, there's no elevator in the other building. So it's gonna be a tough sell for retail, so.
Well, the other building is only one story, isn't it?
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was two, but.
Well, it looks like two because of the, the.
This could be my, my eyes distracted by all this stuff that's on that. You know, in close proximity, storage stuff, construction materials and vehicles and. You know, assorted, you know, necessary things for a construction site, but proximity to that building when you're trying to find a tenant. I, I think that makes it harder, but that, I'm not in the real estate. Yes, well, probably, um, we're running out of space, if you go drive by there, you see we're running out of space, so we will be moving. Uh, trailers and storage to the, uh, the Hartford side, the south side.
Yeah.
And it just makes it a little more difficult, but, but, but putting the building up is gonna help clean. The area up, be the last component, it happens to be right on Hot Meadow Street too, and I think it's, it, uh, once we get it going up. It'll make both sides more amenable to a, a tenant, whether it's retail or an office, um. I, I think it's, plus we have, uh, at this time, we're gonna have about, we have two hundred and. Two hundred and twenty tenants in right now, so it's almost generating, uh, you know, use itself just by walking. From your apartment or penthouse, uh, to either one of these buildings, so, um, but we, we, uh, do want to clean it up. And, um, get something going there to satisfy the code and. And hopefully get, hopefully get a nice retail tenant, and I think that would be the best thing for everybody.
Yeah, have you, you know, surveyed your, your tenants at all to see what kind of. Um, entity they would like in, in the buildings, I mean, do they want a coffee shop, do they want a, I don't know, uh, selling?
We, we want a tenant at this point in the building, um, we had some interesting tenants on the other side, potential tenants. Obviously, they didn't, um, they didn't come through, but, uh, we had a, a brewery, a microbrewery. There was a coffee shop, a luncheonette type of, a deal, there was a, 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 a coffee shop with a, a general store. Type of, um, there's three, like, really good prospects, and none of them came through, but, uh, all of them would have been nice fits in there. And, and, um, you know, sometimes when a space is on the market too long, and I think we're about three years on that side. It gets kind of old, and it's like, oh, it's that place at the ridge at Talca Mountain, and so I think maybe this building will give it. A new identity, some new life, uh, back on the market, I, I hope, uh, that it does something like that, sometimes. Uh, e- even people that are just selling their residential home, if it's not moving, they'll take it off the market for six months, just so that it can be reborn. And, and so I, I think, um, or I'm hoping anyway, that, um, but while we have to build this as part of our commitment. Um, I'm hoping that it also generates some new interest in, in the retail or office market right here. At the, uh, Alba Mountain.
And what would be your interior build out on this, will it be left at studs, or will there be wallboard up?
Um, as a, as just a shell on the market.
Right.
You know, as a shell on the market, um, for this space, we, we will, um, probably put sheetrock on the walls. Like we did on the thirty-six hundred, the, the smaller one, we did put sheetrock on those walls, just to brighten it up, make it look a little bit nicer inside. The, um. The, we could, um, we could have did a better job on the other side during the second floor, with blocking out, blacking out the windows, we're gonna get in there and do that. Right now, the, um, this one, we kept the floor level at ten feet, uh, the, the other building, we have fourteen feet. Uh, so this one at least has a possibility to do two stories, whereas the other side no longer has that possi- possibility, but, um. The only thing I'm thinking in here is, we would hold off initially on maybe the elevator. Um, you know, some of those things we might, might back away from. Um, I know, we have all the utilities stubbed into this building, so we're really, you know, we're ready to go. With something here, if we can get an agreement on what to build and, and, um. Move forward, whether the building also gives us a little bit of flexibility, in the event that it doesn't, uh, doesn't lease. Retail or office. But that, um, I think the answer, short answer is sheetrock on the inside, we're probably bringing electric in to illuminate it a little bit. Put some fire protection inside, that, that kind of thing, uh, uh, which also makes it more marketable.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Okay, okay, any other commissioners have any, uh, input? No, so then how about, uh, a motion to table to two weeks for the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, she loves table. All right, um, any discussion on this? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that one's unanimous, all right, well, thank you, thank you for coming back.
Appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of board.
Okay, Laura, we're back to you for general commission business, which is the temporary outdoor dining for the twenty-twenty-two season.
So recently, this went before the Board of Selectmen, and they actually waived the fees as they've done similarly in the last two years. For the outdoor dining provisions, the temporary outdoor dining provisions based off of COVID. So at this time, we're requesting that you go forward, approve, um, administrative approval like we have in the last two years, to kind of. Speed or streamline the process, right now, we've been able to turn over these applications in approximately three days. Rather than going before the commission, uh, the commission, and again, I would bring you the updates, just like I did last year, knowing which ones were approved. I believe we had twelve applications last year for this.
And they were all grandfathered, or did they have to apply again?
What they have to do is just request, that they would like to renew, and then we can go forward and issue a permit for them. This provision does expire March thirty-first next year, and then we'll have to go back to original outdoor dining provisions.
So the approval for staff to accept and evaluate and approve these things, when we created that or endorsed that strategy. You're suggesting that we put a time limit on it, it expires at two years?
It will automatically expire, and currently, we've already had it set to expire actually this month, when we did it last year.
Do we have a proposed, proposed motion on this?
I don't remember doing that, it seems silly to me, but it still seems silly, why would we have done that? I don't know, maybe I missed, missed the meeting.
Why did we do the administrative?
No, why, why didn't we put a sunset provision in the motion that we passed?
I believe we did.
Yeah, I think it was for a year or something.
Well, we're past the year, so what Laura's reporting is that we did it twice.
Actually, it was two years.
We've done it twice, correct?
Oh, okay, well, hey.
Well, it's concurrent with the state of pool, really.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, and now we have a precedent, so, you know, it's a tradition, we do this every year.
Well, hopefully, we're done.
Does somebody have a motion?
Uh, that's what I said, we, we don't. You have suggested language for this, Laura, or do we just make a motion to continue the, uh?
You could have a motion to continue the, uh, temporary outdoor provision, or outdoor dining provisions. The same as the twenty-twenty-one season?
Yeah, actually, I'm, 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 Miss, I, I'm, Evan's been clear, my concern is, why would we have had a. Sunsetting on your authorization to evaluate and approve these things? For as long as the one goes and we need that service, why would we, you know?
We just have the outdoor dining, temporary outdoor process set to expire in one year. So the permit itself, it expired in one year. Because I wouldn't have the authority the following year to approve them in the same fashion.
Yeah, I think we're wearing it out here, is there a motion?
Maybe it's just an extension of, uh, of the, of the end date, so we go to, is it? Specific date in March, or is it the end of March, beginning of March, the fifteenth of March?
March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
All right, so does someone want to make a motion to extend the administrative, uh, through the?
Process.
The outdoor dining process, temporary outdoor dining permit thing process. All right, then I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I move that we extend the, uh, the, uh. I don't even know what I said, the, uh, the date for the, uh, extend the, uh, temporary outdoor dining. Process through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Thank you for whatever. Now, just to be understanding, this is the administrative approval of, of, of these permits. And no fees because the selectmen waived the fee.
Well, the fees remain up to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, just clarifying that.
Yeah.
All right, we got it.
Okay.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye, well, thank you, um, all right, that's approved, and then, uh, I don't think we have anything else. Are, are we still scheduled for, we don't have a next special meeting, right, scheduled?
Do not have a special meeting currently scheduled, so the next regular meeting is scheduled currently for April eighteenth. And by that time, I believe our new town planner will be joining you.
Okay, all right.
And where do we stand on our ADU, um, writing?
With the selectmen, they are actually looking for some kind of presentation from us.
As far as square footage and all that kind of.
Oh, that, that. Yeah, yeah, because that's, um, speaking with one of the selectmen, they were also interested to know, you know. What we would be entertaining for changes to the regs.
Right.
That we aren't just telling them we're going to make changes and then not do anything, so.
Right, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I don't know that we addressed that at all.
So maybe we could start thinking about when we want to start talking about that.
I think we should, we should hold off on this topic until the chairman is here, because.
Yeah.
I don't sense any interest in, on his part in, you know, previewing. What areas of, uh, you know, what topics we might be pursuing. I'm not sure, we never really discussed that, we didn't vote on it, but I think, you know, Dave has some very distinct.
But it's not the day to discuss, it's just that we want it.
Right.
Hmm, kind of bring it up again.
Yeah, bring it up again, because we have a bunch of items that we need to do, um, and we. Every meeting that, you know, that and the cannabis and the tarifil, and, um, so there's a bunch of items that we, we want to. Get done when the new, the new guys are.
The one, the two that the calendar's running on need to be probably at the top of our list, I mean. That's like my thought, I don't know, everybody else is entitled to theirs, but, um, the cannabis thing and the, uh.
ADU.
ADU, yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn, anybody?
I'll move that we adjourn.
All right, thank you, Bruce, and I think I saw Anne's hand move there, so she's.
She can have a second, yeah.
All right.
All in favor?
Night, everybody.
Okay, have a good night, yeah.